I'll officially call to order the study session of the Coachella Valley Water Agency Board of Directors, May 4th, 2022, here in Palm Desert and over Zoom in our website. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2021-43. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format in person at CBW's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and our YouTube channel. And members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board, and such comments will become part of the board meeting records. We will have one, at least one, board member attending via Zoom, so I'll make sure to give plenty of opportunity for them.
President Pal.
Yes?
Director Nelson just joined as well.
Okay, so we'll have two by Zoom and three in person. And this being a study session, we will have no action taken today, but we do have an opportunity for discussion and public comment. So would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Croatia stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with a benevolent justice rule.
And roll call, please, Marcelo.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Pal.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Egler.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
And so we have this one item of study. It's our presentation on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget and rates. And I'm not sure, Jeff, are you leading or Carrie? Do we have, well, yeah, if we have public comment now, is there anybody wishing to make public comment? And we'll have opportunity along the way if you use the raise hand feature over Zoom to let us know you'd like to make public comment. We can accommodate that.
And I don't show any raised hands on here as well.
Do we have any members of the public on?
No, I don't show anybody, anybody from the public. Correct.
Okay, seeing none. Why don't you go ahead, Carrie?
Good afternoon, members of the board. So thank you for being here, for to talk about the proposed budget for fiscal 2023 and the rate. Oh, sorry, thank you. So for today, I do want to acknowledge all the departments for their contribution. We would not have been able to prepare the fiscal 2023 budget and the forecast without their help. So thank you to all of them for helping us through this process. So this presentation, the focus of the agenda is the fiscal 2023 budget and also the rate recommendations. So throughout the presentation, you will see the forecasts for the next four years. But again, the focus is on the proposal for fiscal 2023 and how that impacts the future years. So we're not recommending any changes on the future years, and that's going to be evaluated each year, and we're going to go through this process each time. So along with your PowerPoint presentation, we did attach a rate table, not the rate, the rate table that shows which rates are changing, and also a copy of the all-fund summary and the fund summary tables that shows the expenses in a line item detail, and also a copy of the CIP budget for the five years. I do want to hand out, we did kind of revise the fund summary table that you have, because I recall by the time I loaded the agenda item, we recalled that Director Nelson had requested to see 2019 and 2020 actuals. So this is what this is, so you can have it with you. And we've emailed it as well to Celia for Director Nelson and Director Estrada.
And this item will be available for the public as well?
Oh, sorry.
First one.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you. Okay.
So this new table just shows the 2019 actuals, 2020, and you did see a little bit of change on the 2022 budget. We had a little bit of a pull issue, so it's the revised column is what you looked at for 2022. There's no change on 2023.
Okay.
Somebody's, okay, so she's pulling. Before I proceed, I'm just.
So there was a downward revision on what we expect to collect in property taxes during the current fiscal year?
Yes. So that's based on our mid-year adjustment as well. So that's why our projection is based on that, because the property values definitely increase in 2021. That's because of assessed value, but we can kind of see the market stabilizing a little bit on home values, so we don't expect that significant increase in property tax in the next year.
Yeah.
That's quite a big number, Ms.
That was almost $5 million, right?
Yeah, but if you can see on the actuals for, as of period nine, which is March, we've only collected 25, and we're probably expecting another 25, less than that. So 46 is what we're kind of anticipating to receive by the end of this fiscal year. And that's consistent with what we presented in the mid-year adjustment about a few weeks ago. Can I go back to the presentation? Thank you.
I think it's going to be hard.
Yeah, I didn't want to say.
So what was our primary focus in completing the fiscal 2023 budget? So definitely, we want to maintain a positive cash flow. So what does it mean to have a positive cash flow and why is it important? So the positive cash flow is what the district has to prove that we have strong liquidity that enables us to cover our debt obligations and all our operating expenses. One of the things that makes it important for us to have a positive cash flow is that it shows our lenders, that we have the ability to pay them back, and that we are protected against future financial challenges, that's, you know, unforeseen financial challenges that might come along the way. One of the things that we didn't show in this presentation, and you will see it on the all-fund summary, is the importance of having the number of these cash on hand. We would like to meet about 365 days. That makes us liquid to be able to protect ourselves in the event of huge financial challenges that comes along the way.
And where does that benchmark come from?
Well, actually, so that's one of the things that we actually.
Is that our policy?
It's not really a policy, but that's just a recommended. And one of the things that we have prepared, which I did not include in here, is we actually have a whole presentation on credit rating and the importance of having those cash on hand, and we were hoping to present that at the Finance Committee meeting, the upcoming Finance Committee meeting, or even through the board as informational item. It kind of goes through, it kind of puts us on a benchmark with other water agencies where their cash on hands are, how do you get a double A rating versus an A+. It kind of shows you that fluctuations on the cash.
I'll look forward to seeing that.
It's actually a 10-page, it's actually a 10-page presentation that we're preparing, and it's going to be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. Carrie, one other thing too on this day's cash and on the idea of maintaining a positive cash flow. I understand why that's in there, but it's maybe not a strict rule. I mean, I looked at, if you look at the General Manager's Report for March, there's over $510 million of cash at the district, right? And I know there's timing issues and things like that, but that's a really high number.
Yes.
And so if we always maintain a positive cash flow, you would just continue to grow that number indefinitely, and I don't know that that's really our goal.
Well, we'll show you through the funds. So part of that too, when they're looking into the credit ratings, it is looked to by fund. So some funds can dip below that and some funds can have higher. For example, Stormwater had a stronger cash flow, which kind of makes up the majority of that $500,000. And you will see on the next slides that we, as you directed, we are utilizing more of the reserves to draw down that Stormwater funds in the next five years. So part of that is, we have to look at it by fund as well, because our credit rating is by fund when they lend us money, as they look at that.
Yeah, all right. I mean, I think of all these budgeting goals, they're all important, probably the least important is the positive cash flow, just because sometimes it doesn't make sense.
Yes.
Yeah, and you can still accomplish the other goals.
Okay. So the next one is the debt covenants, and of course, now that we have bonds issued and also loans, a lot of loans from EPA, Inset Water Resource Board, there are agreements that we have entered into to make sure that we have sufficient cash reserves to pay off the debt obligations. So that's another item that we have to keep in track, because we have pledged revenues as well, where we can't touch certain revenues to ensure that it's remaining in there to pay back the loan. So that's important. And then, of course, the target reserve, as we set up, we have to maintain a target reserve along with, to ensure our liquidity. And the last two lines is, again, it's just kind of showing where we're at, where we got the rating. Recently, we got an AA+ and a AAA for Stormwater. And with that comes, again, you know, the goal of making sure that we meet all of those so that we can maintain the credit rating for our district. So some of the contributing factors when we were looking into fiscal 2023 budget is the high inflation rate. Right now, as of March, it is at 10%. So although it is 10% for March, we did not use the 10% as our escalation or inflation index. We based our recommendation looking at historical trends for the CPI. So some of the index varies depending on the type of cost, like, for example, energy is slightly higher, because energy has been, utilities has been going up, so the escalation for that is higher compared to other costs in a similar area for operating. The next item is the anticipated drought measure to be imposed by the governor. So we did, again, look at trending for the consumption. So we looked at historical, the historical consumption in the last 10 years. So right now, we have the increase resulting from the COVID, and so we did just slightly adjust the consumption a little bit closer to the trending in the last 10 years. So you'll see a slight decrease in sales revenue for that. Another one is, of course, the aging infrastructure and expansion. So this is, this comes every year, right? Every year, we have this process where we have capital projects to replace our, replace our existing facilities and also build new construction to accommodate growth. And our engineering department has done a great job in identifying and prioritizing those projects that are truly needed by the district to be completed. And the last one that we looked into is to make sure to grant the loans and other debt issuance to support. We're always looking for other monies to help support our expenses. So we'll start off, the first one that we're going to look into is the State Water Project Fund. So the top line is the total revenue for the State Water Project Fund, and the types of revenue that sources are limited for State Water. It is primarily just made up of property tax and the return on investments. So the budgeted tax revenue increased by 2.4 million as compared to last fiscal year, and this is based on the 11 cents tax rate levy beginning fiscal 2022. So the total revenue for that is 80.8 million. And in the last six months, there has been a decrease in, if you can see it on the fund summary, the decrease in investment income, again, the total return has decreased as compared to last year by about 40 basis points, and that's resulting from the Federal Reserve's actions that has a lagging effect on us, and I think you've talked about that last meeting as well. So there's an adjustment on that. The total expense for State Water Project is actually 69.4 million, in which 68 and a half of that is on water purchases. So I do want to note that the number that's showing, the value that's showing on this slide, is based on the change as compared to fiscal year 2020 through. That's not the total water purchase for the fixed transportation and the YUVA. Those, that's just the increase as compared to last fiscal year. So predicting the water purchase continues to be a challenge, as it can considerably change from year to year. So for the past 10 years, the actuals has gone, has increased as high as 23.4 and has decreased as low as 14 and a half million, as shown in the bar graph and the fund summary table. So for this year, we had, we tried to do the best estimate that we can, so we increased the water purchase by $6.3 million.
Do we actually get water?
Yeah. So the red line represents the target reserves, and the blue line represents the potential ending reserves for State Water Projects. And so the difference between, the difference between those two lines is what we refer to as the unassigned reserve. And as I mentioned earlier, the unassigned reserve is used as a cash flow funding source to finance the operations in the projects. So this one is more consistent with the other funds, where we use that to, to use it to pay for projects and to pay for operating until we get reimbursement for some of our grants and loans. So it's important to have that gap between the target reserve and the ending reserve to maintain an adequate reserve to sustain us, to sustain us throughout the years.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, honestly, there's not, it's very limited where we can use these funds, right? The tax revenues.
That's correct.
And if 50% is optimistic, which I think it is, conservative, right, in terms of budgeting, you may end up with an even bigger gap if we don't hit 50% between the reserves and the target. You know, we need to watch that, because, you know.
I was reminded by staff that if we had zero water delivered, the fixed price on the State Water Project would still be about $50 million. So these green bars contain both the fixed and variable costs.
Yeah, starting in '23, it's 50%. Well, it's a hybrid in '23, but it's 50% in '24, '25, '26, '27.
Right, but.
My point is, we may be collecting more tax than we can use if, if 50% is kind of the ceiling of this thing. I mean, maybe we get a 90% year and we start burning through some of this additional reserve.
When was the last time we had 50?
We did, when was the last, who has that information?
Last time.
Robert, we had, didn't we have some 70 and 80 and that kind of thing?
Prior to Wanger, we were doing really well, but since the.
I mean, what, I guess, Robert, a fair question, is 50% considered realistic, or is it too high or too low? Do we know?
No. Great question, sir. So I guess, first questions first. We have received, so 2017 was a good year, 2019 was a good year, so 85 and 75%, respectively. The last two years, you know, seem to have kind of blinded everybody to, you know, those events of two, 5% years. I think 50% is a reasonable number to use, because, you know, we're tracking the allocation since the Wanger decision, 2007. So I think it's, I think DWR, you know, does their delivery capability reports of the output of future outputs, you know, for the State Water Project, and I think about 50% is where they're tracking at as well.
Over the last 10 years, 50% of the average?
I'm trying to remember the number, over the last 10 years, certainly, I think.
It's probably higher than that.
Yeah.
Probably higher, but, you know, I just, I thought I heard 45 is the new number.
It kind of depends, I mean, so, you know, this 5% really, you know, the two, the two 5% has really knocked us for a loop, but if you lop those off, then yeah, I mean, I think, you know, before then, it was probably tracking higher than 50%. So.
Yeah.
But the number has been coming down. I mean, it wasn't too long ago where we were using 65%.
Yes, that's right, and we did redirect it downwards, you know.
I guess all I'm saying is, you know, the, Robert, thanks for being ready with those numbers, by the way, you had the.
Well, that's right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm ready. Good job, but.
Because we ask for every year.
Yeah, I think Dan Jerome was ready for that, too. He's, you already knew him, too.
Nice for a test.
Yeah, make sure you leave some room on your arm when you do these tattoos, so every year you can add, yeah. So my point was, the tax might be a little high, because there's only certain things you can use it for, and if it starts, you know, this blue line's going up, up, up.
There are other things, though, that aren't accounted for here. The repairs at Orville, because of the flooding or the releases. We have Paris that we're also looking at. We have sites. I mean, they basically announced that it's all down here and the other factors to continue, but.
Right, right, right.
President Pal, so from my perspective, if you go back to that slide, I was very concerned about this graph here and the message that it conveys. And I do want to just emphasize, as Carrie mentioned, we're focusing today and in the coming months to the budget adoption, for just adopting the fiscal year 23 budget, period. It's clearly showing the trend. If everything remains the same, then this is the picture we're looking at. And obviously, it shows that that tax level is a little too high, but we know there's so many things in flux. As Jim Barrett said, he named Paris Seepage, Orville Dam, Delta Conveyance, East Branch enlargement. All of these projects have, are at different points of their life cycle, and many of them are growing. And of course, the largest one is sites, and as we've discussed before, that's really the only project which the district has discretion over whether or not we're going to participate in. The rest of it, as a state water project contractor, we are obligated to be contributing our fair share based upon the project itself. Sometimes it's allocated to all of the state contractors, of which our share is about 3.4%. East Branch enlargement, I think, is only for contractors, so we'd have a higher percentage. So as these projects start to get going, the costs are going to be going up higher. If you look at the chart there for '21, you'll see, that's the first year we actually met target.
Yeah.
We had several years where we were rebuilding this fund, is that we reestablished it a number of years ago, and we just met target less than a year ago. In this year's budget, we had four of these projects budgeted, which were expected to be added to additional expenses on our billing through the State Water Project Statement of Charges process, and none of those materialized for this year for various reasons. So we know that those certain levels are kicking in sooner or later, and even those amounts that we were anticipating for '22, that's just the beginning for some of these projects. So there is an escalation in some of these projects, some greater than others. And this fund really has to stand on its own. You're not going to have other funds lending to this one, and this one doesn't lend to others. It's really got to have more security on its own. So we had a long and hard discussion about this, about what is our recommendation for the tax. Just a year ago, we persuaded you to increase by the one penny per $100 AV. And we do think that it is appropriate for it to be at that level for this year, but we did want to preview for you the future years and say, yes, obviously, this is going to be a significant issue. A deep analysis is going to be ongoing on this, on whether or not in a year from now for '24, if we're going to have the same recommendation or not. So I hope that helps.
All right, yeah, I'm glad you're looking at it. I think it's okay for now, too, but next year, let's take a closer look.
Well, it's kind of a theme with other funds, too. We see some trends, there showed some positivity, but we're just looking at it one year at a time.
And again, if it helps at all, the reserve target for this fund is artificially low. You know, as I mentioned, no water deliveries at all, we'd still owe $50 million. So I think a case could be made that the reserve target ought to be $50 million. And then if you figure there's an average water delivery, then that needs to be considered in the mix as well. So, you know, the fact that it's showing such a huge and growing gap is probably not as realistic as it perhaps should be. Why is it 50? We've been paying 50 every year. Well, that's what the staff tells me. If there was no water delivery at all, the fixed cost of being a State Water Project contractor is $50 million. So yeah, we pay $50 million every year, at least.
That's correct.
And then the water deliveries just add to that. So I mean, if you were to calculate the acre foot cost of what we get from the State Water Project, it'd be pretty expensive right now during a 5% year.
All right.
In the thousands of dollars per acre foot.
Two years and a half.
I just didn't think it was that much. That's what I'm told. I don't know, we can have Robert come back down, but.
It is 50, it's about 50. Yeah.
And the variable costs aren't really the water, it's the pumping of the water, right? It's electricity. Well, there's less water to pump in a year like this, yeah.
Right, and those are variable, not fixed.
Have to get it over the hatchet piece.
So just real briefly, you know, you could think of our participation in the State Water Project as a mortgage on a property, right? So, you know, so there's the, what they call the storage, you know, so there's the storage facilities, and then there's the actual transportation itself, you know, through the aqueduct. So there's, you know, capital costs associated with it, and there's operations and maintenance costs, which, you know, normally we would think as, as a variable cost, but there are fixed components of the O and M costs, which are baked into the $50 million that the General Manager talked about. You know, I think that $50 million has remained fairly steady, you know, year in, year out. And, you know, since we have a 75-year contract with DWR, you know, being an urban contractor, you know, our contract extends to 2035, so they amortize all those costs, plus all the replacement, and then, you know, any kind of, you know, well, you know, replacement costs, operations, maintenance, all of that's bonded. So that's why, you know, the numbers don't change that much, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So one of the things, if you see the red line, based on our policy, our policy had set it to 20 million, so we are proposing to change the target reserve policy. So I'm going to go into the next slide. So one of the things that we're proposing, part of this, is to change the policy reserves and to maintain, to maintain a minimum of at least 100% of the total variable cost, which is a little bit going in line with Mr. Barrett's recommendation. So, but this one, actually, we're tying it into the one that fluctuates the most. So we're recommending to have at least 100% of variable cost in that target reserve. So that would change each year, but we can do the 50, we'd be better to do the 50, or we can do the variable.
I'm not paying attention.
Yeah.
Oh, they already put this before you said that.
Director Bianco, I'm sorry, is your mic on?
I'm not favoring changing that target reserve at all. I don't think we should be changing that. We fought long and hard to get those reserves targets where they were on all these things, years.
So the proposal is to maintain the 11% tax for fiscal 2023, again, and then. And then it also takes into account that part of the cost is allocated to us in Mission Creek replenishment for five years. It's twenty-five point seven. It's a little over five million each year. And and again, the other factors that we had to consider was already mentioned by Mr. Barrett.
Change that target reserve to fifty million dollars. You guys are going to want over a hundred.
We're not recommending.
No, 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 no. It's that's what's going to happen. It's going to happen for years.
Well.
Not right now, because we're talking, you're telling us no, but that's what's going to happen.
Go back to this slide just for a second. So again, Carrie, say the definition of what your recommendation is. It's based upon the variable.
It's based on the variable cost, which is the one that fluctuates the most. So we're recommending to maintain a hundred percent of that variable cost, which is approximately about a little over twenty to twenty-five million dollars. And that changes based on what estimated for variable. So you can see the trending line, that red line is what we're proposing. So this is not at fifty. This is at.
My concern was, what what's the common sense of to have a static number of twenty million that never changes? Especially when we're in a high inflationary time period. This this suggested change does attach that inflation factor to that. If the cost of the variable cost, the water is going to go up, then it makes sense to have the reserve target go up with that. And I think that's what you're seeing. You see it peaks just below thirty million and then actually drops down a bit after that. So it's not just an automatic escalation that's going to get us to fifty. But I think right now, to have it around the twenty million dollar range, which is what we're projecting for twenty-three to get up to around twenty-five or twenty-six. It was at twenty-six in a static level for years until we changed it about a year and a half ago.
This is a future board decision. It's not staff's decision.
No.
So it will come. It will come back to us at a meeting where we have time to discuss it.
But not to belabor the point, if the fixed cost is fifty million dollars a year and the variable cost is between twenty and twenty-five million dollars a year, that's seventy-five million dollars a year. Our revenue is eighty million. So we're only we're only making five million a year on the rate that we have without considering all of the other issues that have not yet been billed.
That's correct.
Okay, just.
Excellent point.
Excellent point.
Well, we'll take another look at it because, I mean, to me, it's not, the target isn't really the thing that matters. What matters is is the is the health of the fund and how much tax we're collecting and and what's the tax rate. That's really what matters. You know, the target could be whatever you want it to be. It's a separate decision to say how big the tax is going to be. And that to me, that's the one that matters.
And targets are always considered the minimums, also.
Yeah, but we have policies on how much over that target that year that we've gone over many times. And that 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 is.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up. I I mean, it's clearly going in the direction that requires a bit of attention.
And we will pay attention to it every year.
I have a quick question whenever.
Go ahead.
So just just for future reference, because I I get mixed up sometimes, and I think I figured it out. But when we show fiscal years, are we always showing the end of the fiscal year on that calendar?
Yes, we are. That's a good question.
Is that your, you know, forever? You guys always do that? Or does it change people, the person that puts these together to?
Yes, that's a standard. That's a standard reporting. So when you see fiscal year twenty-one in the first column, that's ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so so just to, we're projecting our ending reserves for next fiscal year to be around forty-seven, forty?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, good. Why don't we keep moving?
Okay. So the Canal Water Fund. So this is, this slide shows again, for the Canal Water Fund, the total revenue is shown in the black graph that you see on the graph up here. It's it's actually forty-four point six million. And out of that forty-four point six million includes thirty-seven point nine million in operating revenues. And six point six million is made up of a four point nine in loans from U S B R for irrigation laterals and one point nine capital reimbursements from San Diego County Water Authority and San Luis River Indian Water Authority for the Mid Canal Storage and the C C L P San Andreas Project. So just to kind of let you know that four point nine loan proceeds, we are currently in application, but we are hoping that to get that. If we do hear for that, then we'll proceed with the project. So unless we get the approval for the U S B R loan, then we will proceed with those projects. That is that is included in that estimate. The total expenses is what the charts, the bar graph shows, and the total expenses is forty-six point eight million, which includes thirty-three point eight million in operating expenses. And again, the bullet, the line item bullet in there only shows the change from the prior year, not the total for water purchases or chemicals. It's just showing the driver of the increase in OpEx as compared to last year. And the five-year C I P is at fifty-four point nine million dollars. And that's for the five years, but for the fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, sorry. The C I P is actually thirteen point million. That's the C I P for fiscal twenty twenty-three. That's not the PGO. I apologize. That's a typo on the slide. The C I P project, the net C I P project is thirteen million and six point four million of that thirteen million for fiscal twenty twenty-three is going to be funded through our available reserves. And again, this includes a potential annual debt service of the one point three million dollars if we get that U S B R loan to pay for the irrigation lateral projects. That's what we're estimating what the the debt service would be annually for that. So again, in here, the total revenue is about two point two million lower than the total expenses. You can see that the black line is lower than the bar graph for fiscal twenty twenty-three budget. And so that the gap between the the ending reserve line and the target reserve line is about nineteen point four million. So we are reducing our reserves in fiscal twenty twenty-three. Questions on, specific questions on this one? And again, the project area on that one is, again, we're just, we're not recommending any changes in the future years, but we are recommending to decrease the proposed increase by about a point six percent. So on the next page, actually, in the next slide, if it's okay for me to go to the next one. This one shows what the rate components are going to be changing. So we are decreasing the rate, proposed rate increase by about from two point six to two percent only on the I W C C and W S S rates. We are keeping everything else the same because those are more tied into achieving a full cost recovery on those services. But maintaining this rate will make sure that we have sufficient operating revenues to cover operating expenses. And again, we talked about maintaining a positive cash flow. And at the same time, we're still meeting our reserve target and our unanticipated, unassigned reserve to meet unanticipated costs. So the target reserve. Sorry, I'm going to go back to this slide. So the the reserves for the Canal Water Fund is about nineteen point four million, which represents about forty-one percent of your total expenses. And again, it's important to keep enough sufficient funds in the unassigned reserves because we use that as a means of our cash flow. So even though we have grants and loans approved, those are all on reimbursement basis. And we do not get the money until we spend the money. So this, the unassigned reserves is what we utilize to pay for these expenses and then gets replenished. And sometimes the replenishments of the funds come six to nine months after. And there are some that actually they wait for us to complete the project, so we don't even get the money until two to three years from now. So we take all of that into consideration to make sure that we have sufficient unassigned reserves to finance all of these projects and also the operating expenses to keep us afloat and not touch the target reserve. Because that's the minimum we have to maintain untouched.
What's the lowest number we've been at in the last ten years?
Cash?
Cash.
The last ten years? I'm sorry. I don't have that number for the last ten years.
I bet it's a little. I bet it's a little over three hundred million.
Yeah. And so we're worried about that? This cash flow? Well, I mean, this is new. You guys, you guys, this is new, this cash flow talk. I don't think I've heard this before.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, we've only been here four, under four years.
We're faking this into the, I mean, we're talking about it. We never talked about that cash flow was an issue for us or that you were worried about it.
They have. I mean, it was really, it was really something that was kind of new once we started doing outside financing.
That's absolutely correct.
Getting our rating and meeting bank covenants and getting, you know, issuing bonds. I mean, so we've been at that for three years now, right? Or four, three-ish.
And.
Three-ish.
And, sorry, go ahead.
Just to go off a slight tangent there. So when you look at our credit ratings that we're getting now, and the ones that we just received for the stormwater certificates of participation, which are getting ready to be sold tomorrow. Fitch and S and P gave us ratings, and each of them has a kind of different focus. Standard and Poor's focuses on the the individual fund. And Fitch does the individual instrument that you're borrowing on as well as a rating on the overall organization. So they basically say we have a triple A on the stormwater cops. And we also have a triple A on the organization absent a thorough review of the entire organization, all funds. But that that number, that rating could be different for each. But they're saying, based upon the inherent strength of the organization as a whole, kind of the the number that you're referring to, Director Bianco, where you say, well, we've got plenty of cash that provides some additional flexibility. But we also really have to be careful about focusing on individual funds and then individual instruments within those funds. So some funds are healthier than others. The state, the Stormwater Fund is the healthiest of all the funds. And we have done interfund borrowing in the past. We still have interfund out loans outstanding, which we need to pay off. But those aren't good long-term solutions for managing your situation. And all of those previous loans are made before we are in in the situation we're in now, where we're doing debt financing. And so we want to be more careful about focusing on individual silos, individual lines of business, and make sure each one of them is financially sound and healthy.
And to kind of add a little bit to on the cash that you saw that you mentioned is at five hundred for the last report. So that includes money that we can't touch from the bonds. So those are restricted. So there's about eighty million dollars in there, fifty from the Oasis, and then the thirty that came for the domestic note. So that sometimes inflates it. So you'll see it in the next month. So as we sell the stormwater tomorrow, we're going to get potentially sixty million dollars in the bank, but we can't touch that specifically. We have to set that aside. But it is part of our cash, total cash, but those cash cannot be touched for anything else except for the projects I was borrowed for.
They will be spent.
But they will be spent on the projects, specific projects.
Were we, now I'm on a totally different subject, but this, these bridge loans, you know, the revolving loans, weren't those supposed to smooth out some of that?
That that was, and.
So.
We we are working on not only extending that agreement, but renegotiating it to make it more accessible. We found that. So we we had an agreement with them to be able to borrow on any of the funds, and they had these somewhat onerous requirements on seven years worth of projections for each fund. And it really, we found it was very hampering, and they were, we were not qualifying in certain instances of being able to access those funds as bridge financing. So what we're doing now is we're cutting out most of the funds. We're focusing on three. Domestic, stormwater, and sanitation. And so all of the other stuff, other funds like East Replenishment is kind of as noise to Bank of the West when they're looking at lending us money for bridge financing in those three funds. So we do expect we'll be able to use it more frequently and rigorously to help bridge those short-term needs as we're, as Carrie said. U S B R won't give us a nickel until, oh, U S D A won't give us any money until the project is completely done. So we have to have interim financing for loans like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So this is the recommendation for the Canal Water Fund, and I'll move on to the next one, if that's okay, unless there's specific questions.
No, just to be clear, the, I don't love the header on your on your chart. I know we have this on several slides. But the rate change is the proposed rate compared to the priorly proposed rate.
To eighteen rate.
It's actually a rate increase, even though it shows it as a decrease. I guess if we do this in the future, maybe we can include a column that shows what the actual increase is or what the rate change is.
Probably could label the original rate to the original Prop eighteen rate.
Yeah, well, if if that's what it is, but you know, I mean, we're talking about doing a rate increase, and yet here's a slide that says the rate's going down. So.
We'll make sure to change that for the presentation.
Yeah, it seems misleading.
Thank you.
I understand it, but it's it's not not how I would have done it. Yeah.
Um, so now.
The rate, yeah, right.
Rate rate increase.
Yes.
It's not as much.
Right. Not as much as what they proposed last time we spoke.
Yeah, I'm repaying you. Yes. So we're moving on to the West Whitewater Repunishment Fund. So the total revenues as shown in the graph for fiscal twenty twenty-three is thirty point thirty-four point seven million, which includes thirty point five million in operating revenues and four point one million of supplemental water supply charge to fund the Palm Desert groundwater replenishment phase two. And you can see on the fiscal twenty twenty-three, that is, the total revenue is below what the projected total expenses are. So the total expenses, which is slightly just a little over the forty million mark line, is actually forty point one million. It includes twenty-six point seven million in operating expenses. This is a decrease as compared to last fiscal year, and part of that, too, is the removal of that Rio Grande Bravo delivery. But however, we have replaced that expense with paying off the domestic fund by about eight million dollars. And then that also includes, the total expense also includes five and a half million in C I P, but then that is offset by four point one million in supplemental water supply charge. So it is resulting the use of one point three million in PGO funds for fiscal twenty twenty-three. So the total revenues is about five and a half million lower than total expenses. So that is reducing our available reserves in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So the unassigned reserve, the gap between the blue line and the red line is about fourteen point two million dollars. So in the case of this West West Fund, the ending reserve starts dipping beginning fiscal twenty twenty-four and does not recover until fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. So we're still recommending to maintain the rate increase. However, we did. So we're still recommending to maintain the rate increase, however, we did, again, and we noted about the presentation is it's decreasing from a 20% rate increase to a 19% rate increase for the proposal.
Still 19%.
19%, yes.
I may, I think I made that point last time we talked about this, so. Yes, it's, it's a very significant increase.
Yes, yeah.
And but as you can see, it, it, even with that increase, we're still below what our, the total revenues are still below what the expected total expenses are by 5.5 million dollars. So we need to keep the rate increase intact, is what we're proposing, to maintain the fund.
I think there's, there's potentially a decision of, do you do the increase this year, or do you do it next year? If you did it next year, it would be an even larger increase as a percent.
That was part of our consideration.
What are those capital expenses on year '24? That's like, that's like $10 million, right? A bit more?
So for the West replenishment, the capital expenses is actually, we only have
It's all the
It's all the waste, the Palm Desert.
Palm Desert.
The Palm Desert.
Recharge.
Recharge Phase Two.
It's a multi-year cost escalating up into '24.
As you say, we feel really
Because that's a, you know, just, just thinking forward and just kind of seeing how this bond seems to struggle. When we get done with the capital expenses that we have for '23, for '24, I just think we have a little bit for '25. Is there anything down the line that we know of at this point beyond that that's going to continue to hit that fund on the, on the capital side?
Most of the CIP in the West Replenishment Fund had been the connections for the nonpotable, but we have moved those, primarily, most of them to the, be subsidized by the sanitation fund because of the cost avoidance for treatment plant expenses because of expected regulations. There are still some replenishment project, or nonpotable projects that do not use sanitation funds, and we'll have to take a look at when we can move those into the CIP. Right now, I don't know that they are in the CIP.
They're in, they're outside of the five-year window.
So, so are there any expenses on this slide that could be paid by the State Water Project Tax?
Well, go ahead.
This includes 5 million of State Water Project cost that was allocated to this fund.
But could those costs be paid by the State Water Project Fund legally?
Can, and we had a discussion, discussions both in open and closed session about this last year.
Well, things have changed.
Yes.
So, I mean, we have this gap in, between the, on the State Water Project Fund, between your actual reserves and your target reserves. So there's some room there.
If, yeah, if we can move that 5 million back to the State Water Project Fund, you're still going to be at a negative loss of about half a million dollars. So it still doesn't change the trajectory of, it, it will help
Well, it would help, it would help a lot.
5 million each year, yeah.
Yeah, because it's annual. I mean, if you did that, it would take the, the rate pressure off of this fund. So what are those 5 million? What is the, what is the expense for that's in this fund instead of the other fund?
These are related to water purchases that was allocated to water expenses that are allocated from State Water Projects. So there's a couple of them that, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, what those are.
Okay, so water purchases.
There was a lot, a much larger number identified in eligible costs that could be moved from the State Water Project to West Replenishment and Mission Creek.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Specifically, when we were going through our prop, our rate increase process in Prop 218 for last year, the, you recall, we had several scenarios that were brought back to the board. And ultimately, we had this teeter-totter approach of doing a partial shift of eligible costs.
I understand, but, but, I mean, the numbers don't look the same as they did a year ago. And the, the State Water Project Fund is doing much better, partly a result of the lower amount of water available. And this fund is not doing well at all. So could we see a presentation on taking all of the eligible State Water Project eligible expenses out of this fund, put them in the State Water Project Fund going forward, right? And see what we can do for rates, because I think you could reduce that increase quite a bit. If it's 19%, maybe it'll be 10% or something.
One of the things that was possible in reducing the expenses to this fund was the fact that the Rosedale Rio Bravo water is not available this year, so that 7.4 million expense was basically, that 7.4 million, although it didn't buy Rosedale Rio Bravo water, was used to pay back domestic for the Mid Valley Pipeline. Now.
I understand that, and
That helps domestic.
No, it does. It helps domestic a lot, and it also is something that we've been talking about doing for a long time. So you have this extraordinary situation which frees up the money. I mean, I, we, we could see I, I'm okay with that personally. I think, I think this other one would be the, the mechanism to take some of the rate pressure off.
We can come back.
Yeah, you know, and I, I, I'd be open to looking at that, but I'd also like for us to maybe have a further conversation so that we can speak more freely. I think a lot of times when I start talking about, and not just me, but maybe some of us, when we start talking about how we move some of these funds around, you know, there's some caution that, that's thrown out there by staff about, you know, you don't want to say this, you don't want to say that. And I'd rather not tippy toe. I, I have some, you know, I think I recall the concerns about, you know, when we talked about increasing that State Water Project tax and, and what it was for, and now it seems like we're getting back to the point where it's going to end up going back to the West Rack, so. No, there's that, there's that struggle that we have, you know, where, where, where that money should, should go and how it should be used, and I, I just, I think at a point, we need to have a conversation in closed session, just so that, you know, we don't, we don't have to, have to tippy toe about what we say.
Can we do that before we act on the budget?
Unless it's not a concern, unless it's not a concern, you know, if, if we can talk open and freely in open session, then, then, then we can do that too. I'm just, I'm just, you know, throwing that, just putting it out there for staff.
No, that's a fair point. I mean, we do have, we have existing litigation on this topic. All I'm asking is to see a model that shows the eligible expenses in, all in that fund so that it takes some of the rate pressure off of the State, of the West Rack Fund.
We can, we can do that.
I think we can do that in open session.
We can.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that approach. I, I support that approach, John. I, I think that, you know, almost as an appendix of what the major costs are in this fund, in, you know, both the capital water purchases and the other operating expenses. I think it would be good to just have those lined out and kind of starred of which ones are, are State Water Project kind of expenses that are eligible expenses that we could look at.
Yeah, you know, and the other possibility, Jeff, I know that, that repaying the domestic fund is important, and I'm all for it. I mean, I was probably the one that pushed it more than anyone, but, but does it really have to be the full 8 million, or can it be half of that, you know, and, I mean, we don't like doing 19% rate increases in one year. And I don't think we really like doing 10% rate increases in one year. So maybe there's a number that gets us down to a lower increase, you know. So maybe the 8 million repayment could be a 6 million, or a 5 million, or a 4 million repayment.
We can kind of show you on a domestic
John, I don't, I, you know, I, I don't, if, if staff trying to hit a target of, of when to repay that, that 50 million in the, in the next five years, seven years, and I, I say that because I don't, you know, to John's point, I don't, I'm not married to you know, not, not being able to spread that out even longer if we have to, just to, just so that we don't impact that rate.
I, I don't believe we have a repayment plan for the Mid Valley Pipeline.
There is, yeah, there isn't a plan.
There's no plan.
The core direction that we are relying upon is to make payments when it is
Possible.
Physically possible.
And I think it is possible here, but let's try to, let's use that number as a, as a way to try to get the rate increase below 10%.
You know, this fund also is experiencing not just the
Did it go up last?
How much did it go up last year?
The West Rack?
The West, the West went up 15%.
Last year.
Last, for the year we're in, the year we're finishing.
And 20, yeah, 20 this year.
Yeah, but aside from the Mid Valley replenishment facility, which is basically a new start, we also moved water purchases from the east to the west, which we negotiated with Metropolitan. The 15,000 acre feet was moved over. Now that, we don't anticipate that will continue forever, but it, it did add to the expense line of this fund.
Right, I wouldn't, water purchase might not be the right, it's, it was more of a wheeling charge, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So we'll do that model for the next presentation and see moving that State Water Project.
Because that's going to be a tough meeting, so we're going to have lots of ammunition, levers that we can, we can, that we can adjust to try to get it where it's more palatable.
It may not be able, may not even need to raise it at all.
Oh, I suspect it'll still be a double digit.
I think there's a, a need at some point to raise it, but
Three votes is what it takes to raise it.
Let's see, let's see what, let's see what, let's see what the numbers show.
I'm open.
And then this solves your problem on the other side of the tax being too high. Because we'll get all the expenses in there, and it'll, you know, it'll balance that fund out also.
You want to solve all of the problems at the same time.
We're trying to make your life easy, Jeff.
Including the ones we haven't talked about.
So this is just a slide showing the decreased plan rate increase and also the fiscal impact of the recommendation, so. Because we'll skip to the next, the next one, so which is the East Whitewater Replenishment Fund. So the total revenue is again the black line as shown in the graph for fiscal 2023. It is actually $21.1 million, which includes 15.6 million in operating revenues and 5.5 million of loan proceeds that's remaining for the Oasis in the charge project that we're going to be utilizing. The total expense for fiscal 2023 is 19.1 million, which includes 10 million in operating expense, which is slightly just higher than compared to last year. The total expense also includes the final debt service payment to domestic of 2 million for the Thomas Levy Project. So this is the final payment. East no longer is going to be owing anything to domestic. And it also includes the 1.1 million debt service, the first repayment of our debt service for the Oasis bond. And then the remaining expense is the CIP of 5.9 million dollars, again, offset by 5.5 million in loan proceeds for the Oasis project, so that only leaves about 400,000 of Pago funds that needs to be used for the CIP project. So in this graph, it shows that the total revenues for fiscal 2023 exceeds total expenses by 2 million. So it does increase our operating, I mean, I'm sorry, our available reserves for fiscal year 2023. So again, you can see the, the blue line going to projection going up in the next forecast, in the next four years. So, but right now, it is very close to our target, so we do need to still go through the increase, the proposed rate increase to get that blue line above the target, the minimum target reserves, again, to, to supplement our cash flow.
So, so the, the
It'll, it'll probably occur
Percentage increase
There's some room there.
That you're proposing is how much?
So it's, yeah, it's going from nine and a half to eight and a half percent.
Okay, so, so you're, you're proposing an eight and a half?
Eight and a half rate increase.
Eight and a half percent is, is how much in revenue?
So in revenue, that results into 8.9, 8.2, sorry, 8.3 million dollars.
It's total revenue.
Yeah.
So what, if, if, when we, if you, we raise the rate, 8%, 8.5%, how much additional revenue do you get?
Like 600 or 700,000 dollars.
Yes, six, yep, that's correct.
That's, that's already baked in the number.
This one's already baked in the numbers right here. It was on page six of your table.
So if you changed, if you spread out the debt repayment for the domestic fund, would you not have to do an outright increase rate?
There isn't a debt repayment to domestic.
There is, and this one's
Yeah, there is 2 million.
2 million.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's only 2 million left.
I'm going to slide you again.
It's, it's, this, if you recall, when we were doing our Oasis COPS last year in the ratings, this was one of the things I had, I was assuring the ratings agencies, we will clear the decks on the old debt on this fund, because it was a very complex credit that we were taking to market, and part of that was saying we're going to liquidate the final amount owed. So the only thing there is going to be the Oasis project debt. So, and we ended up getting an AA minus rating out of that. So I would encourage us to stay the course and pay that final 2 million in this next year's budget.
Jeff, how, how, how do we become committed to having a payment plan for, for the domestic fund? Seems to me like it's an internal policy of when we want to pay it or not, just based on the conversation we had about the West replenishment fund. So how, how, how do we, how do we commit to a payment plan for that and not necessarily for, for the Mid Valley Pipeline? What's the difference?
It's, it's because of, part of the agreement we had in our bond financing, right? You just said that.
Yes.
For the east.
I know, but why, but why, why would we, why would we have to do that?
It's not a contract that says it has to be done.
No, it was, it was as the, as the credit was being analyzed by the ratings agency that the potential lenders who were purchasing the debt instruments were relying upon was included the presumption that we would be paying off that debt in '23, the final payment would be made.
I get that, Jeff, I just, I don't understand.
There isn't
I don't understand how we got ourselves into that. I, it seems to me like it's a, we don't owe the money to someone else. It's, it's an internal policy thing, and it just seems to me that the way you describe it, we have no flexibility. We have to make the payment. I just don't understand why that's the case, other than you're saying that's how you described it and as to the debt that we, that we have, but does that mean that, you know, and I'm just maybe trying to understand the way you keep records of, of, of these numbers, but is this on paper somewhere that, that we owe this amount and, and maybe not the Mid Valley Pipeline? Or why do we have flexibility with one and not the other?
It, it is.
Is there a simple answer to that?
So we went to board to actually report this on, and it's actually in our financials that this money was owed by East to domestic, same thing with the West. And talking about, it was part of the analysis when we got the rating to pay off, to pay off the inter, inter-fund loans. And every year, we have to go through this process. So this year, they're going to be reaffirming our rates. Each year we have, it's part of the, the requirement for the debt covenant is for them to them to reaffirm our bond rates, a bond, a credit rating each year. So if we are committed to pay off this loan by twenty twenty-three, then we strongly advise for us to, to, um, to follow that path, um, so that it does not affect their analysis of our credit rating when there's time to renew the ratings for the East Fund, I mean, for the East replenishment fund.
Thank, thank you. So just a clarifying question and on the same topic, does that mean that we don't have a, a rating for the West replenishment fund at this time? And that's why we haven't had to do that exercise?
We don't have a rating on the West because we have not taken, gone to, uh, private markets to borrow money. That was.
Okay, thank you.
So the only.
I clarify that.
You're welcome.
So just a good question. So were, were it not for this final repayment, um, then would the increase not be necessary?
I think it's still, it's still going to be needed. Um, again, if you can see, uh, there's no gap in between what our target reserve is and our ending reserve is. So there's really no room in there, um, for, again, for the cash flow. So we want to have a little space in between the target reserve, because a target is your minimum reserves. It's kind of technically what you cannot touch when you say target reserves unless all of these, um, um, events happen. So we have to have, uh, some, uh, reserves in there to help subsidize the debt obligations and also the current operating expenses until we get some of those reimbursements back. So it, it's, it's kind of standard. And again, hopefully we can kind of show you in the next, when we present that credit rating, how important it is to maintain reserves, how important it is to maintain, uh, these cash on hand and the cash flow. That would kind of give a better picture of why we're kind of targeting, uh, above minimum target reserves to maintain an adequate amount to sustain that, uh, in the long run. And I think that would kind of give a better picture of why it's important to maintain it.
Okay.
Okay, for this one, and again, this is just a page of showing that we, uh, based on our recommendation, we're meeting our debt covenant requirement, our target reserves are positive cash flow. And the, the proposed rate increase is decreasing from nine and a half percent to eight and a half percent to seventy-eight point one. Um, this next slide is the Mission Creek. Um, there's really no change. We have no proposed rate changes in here. Um, part of the, um, this just kind of shows the total revenues and the total expenses on this and, um, the ending reserves. So part of the increase is the state water project, um, allocation and also some increases in some of the other funds. So I can skip to the next one if it's okay for the Mission Creek. Okay, now for the Domestic Water Fund. So in this bar graph, um, so as you can see, um, so addressing Director Nelson's recommendation earlier of what if we took away that eight million dollar repayment?
Powell.
I'm sorry, Director Powell, so sorry, Director Powell. Uh, eight million, um, so sorry.
That's okay.
Eight million, uh, repayment for the Domestic. That would deep, uh, have your total revenue decrease in fiscal twenty twenty-three. Because if you can see right now, it's hovering, meaning, barely meeting our total expenses. Um, so our total expenses of one hundred and thirty-four point two million with ninety-nine point one million OpEx and then that eight million is included in there. So the primary driver again on the side, um, for the operating expenses, again, that, that kind of goes in line with our escalation, um, I mean, the total cost that's increasing in terms of, um, the CPI. So the total, um, CIP is thirty-four point three million, um, for fiscal twenty twenty-three and it's offset by twenty-seven point nine million in grants and loans, leaving a pay-go of six point four million dollars. So in this one, it shows a total revenue slightly just exceeding total expense by one point two million. So if we take away that eight million dollars or that seven million repayment, that would get, uh, that would decrease your target reserves. Uh, I'm not target reserves, your ending reserves for fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Right, but your, but your ending reserves is sixty and your target's forty-three.
Yes, so that means twenty million.
So it would close the gap.
Close the gap a little bit more.
Yeah, the focus here for this fund is if you look at the slide and you see the, the line at the top for revenues tracking with the bars, that we are just barely meeting OpEx covenants for the debt issuance we just did in January on domestic notes. And it's over five years. So, uh, that's really the major driver to the need for the full five percent for this year.
I can't believe you guys didn't.
Jeff, you're covering your OpEx and you're covering all your capital expenses with that. So, I mean, yeah, you're covering, you, you're saying that we're just barely covering OpEx, but, but you've got the CapEx on bottom of your bar chart, so you're really in good shape.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. I, you're correct, Director Nelson. I, I was really referring to the net cash change, which.
But, but if you, but if you're, but you, you, you have, you're showing an increase in unassigned reserves of, um, four, four million dollars. So it seems like there's four million there that you don't need to collect.
It is tight, but when you look at, uh, the handout that Kerry gave you earlier, in the increase in cash flow in twenty-two, it's estimated to be two point eight, one point one in twenty-three, that's on activity of ninety-one and ninety-nine million dollars. So that.
No, I understand, but, but if you reduce the, the West repayment, uh, from eight to four, it doesn't crash the fund. The fund still does everything it needs to do, it looks like.
The payment, the payment from the West doesn't affect any of the, um, revenue numbers. It's just going to affect the fund balance number.
Right, and you still have a, a excess there. So, I don't know, it, it seems possible to do.
Yeah, twenty minutes, is that, am I right? That's about twenty million in twenty twenty-three budget?
Seven, there's seventeen point six of unassigned reserves. So, so you, so you take away four and you still have, you know, thirteen point six.
Thirteen, yeah.
So I, I wish you guys would have shown us what things look like without a rate increase. It's just because we did that, you know, we sent those notices out. I mean, that doesn't mean anything. Because things change every year, right? And so the five percent increase on which, in our two eighteen, correct, right, is, is how much more revenue?
Probably about three and a half million.
About three and a half million.
Right.
It's about one point two.
It's only one point two? Well, your water sales is almost seventy million. So five percent of seventy million is three and a half.
From the sixty-eight's about, yeah, one point, if you look at page eight for water sales.
That's what I'm looking at. I'm just looking at for twenty-three, that's almost seventy million.
Compared to the twenty-two, it's like sixty-eight. So it's about one point two million.
I mean, I, I thought you guys were real happy when we were, but, I mean, you guys were honest, honest to, to, to make sure that our target reserve, we didn't go below it. But now you guys are saying that we need to be, you know, a lot more than the target reserve.
Seventeen million.
Well, as I said, there's different measures they look at. In the past, I think I've made this point before, in the past, uh, before we arrived, the focus was always on reserves. How, how do you look compared to reserves? Once we got into, uh, the markets borrowing money from, uh, outside lenders, then the greater focus became on, uh, OpEx, revenues, minus expenses, plus debt service, became the new number one as far as their eyes and when they look at that. And then in addition to that, we need to look at, so beyond the operating net, which include, including debt service, what is the plan spend on the non-operating to get it, the net cash flow change at the bottom? And so you, different funds have had different stressors. Um, East replenishment had more of the situation of, we used the change of the reserve policy from, uh, meeting reserve target in two years. We changed it to five years because it, it was going to take that full five years to get to where we needed to be, as we're showing our projections when we're borrowing money for the Oasis debt. Um, this fund, it's a little different emphasis, even though we still need to meet all of those, the same criteria.
So, may I also point you to, so if you look at page eight, so I just kind of went in.
You gotta, I mean, everybody looks at this, right?
Yes.
So if, if someone from the outside would say to me, why do you have a target reserve if you want your reserve higher than that? Why don't you just put your target reserve up higher? So that, you know, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but, you know, I want to be able to.
It's perceptions.
I want to explain it.
So Jeff.
Public, when they ask them, and they do.
Can you, can you show us a slide? Whenever we're supposed to do the rate increase for, for Domestic, right? That shows no rate increase and, and in, in real terms, what impact that would have on our credit rating and our loan covenants and all those things, right? I mean, we're kind of speculating here, it seems like.
Well, and even that is a little bit speculating if you do a long rate increase versus.
Then give us a range. I mean, if, if, you know, you, look, you have the proposed rate increase that staff's recommending and you have the board whose preference would be no rate increase. So let's put it on paper and see what the numbers tell us. And, and, and which, which covenants are we not meeting if we don't do a rate increase?
Yeah, we could, we could include in our next slide. So one of the things is that without the increase, we're not going to meet the, like we said, the debt covenant in terms of the cash. So the part of, part of that, the requirement is for us to have enough reserves to cover our total expenses, uh, and have, so based on these numbers, with, with this rate increase, increase, our fiscal twenty twenty-three cash on hand has already dipped us to two hundred days cash on hand, which is way below what is normally, again, there's no specific line, but it depends on how the credit agency is looking at it. So at sixty million dollars of, um, projected ending reserves in twenty twenty-three, and you have an operating expense of ninety-nine million, and in addition to that, um, that's already, um, less than the number of days that's favorable in terms of, of.
All right, I, I hear what you're saying. So are you suggesting that the target should be ninety-nine million?
Not ninety-nine million, but at least enough to cover, uh, uh, operating expenses of three hundred and sixty-five days for that. So.
Well, but that's ninety-nine million.
Average of that.
Right? I mean, if you look on the thing, it's nine, total expenses, ninety-nine million. So that's three sixty-five days of cash, right? It's a year. So you're, are you suggesting that because of this lender and whatever, that their expectation is that we have a reserve target of ninety-nine million and that we should always be at least at that level or higher?
No, we should be able to have sufficient, so we're, they're taking into account all our grant revenues as well in those. So, um, it's not necessarily ninety-nine million. There's actually an equation that we kind of have to put in. Um, but there is some, some requirement for us to make sure that we have enough, um, reserves to, to cover us for three hundred and sixty-five days. So does it necess, again, that three sixty-five is a number that advisable, um, but it's not, that's why sometimes the rating agencies doesn't set that as a rule, but they do compare it with, with other agencies and how we get rated.
All right, well, I think we should be able to defend our forty million dollar target. I mean, if that's, if, if I was going to ask you staff to do something, next time you meet with these guys, tell them why forty million's enough. And then when we run the district, we'll shoot for that number instead of ninety-nine. Right? I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying, we, that's a good number. We've all agreed to it. So why aren't we using it?
Well, I think if, if we bring that.
Present.
Ratings presentation to you next, that'll probably help clear up some of the ambiguity.
We just, we just, we just agreed on all these targets, reserves, right? I mean, didn't we, we spent a lot of time on all these things? I know you guys want to keep that two eighteen and we want to keep it going. And I get it, because of all these costs, like, you know, you've got to push yourself in arse you sometime.
Yeah, so, so, so my neighbor comes to me and says, why are you raising my rate? I looked at your presentation and it shows you have seventeen million, point six million of excess unassigned reserves. What am I supposed to say?
Well, it has to do with the bodies.
Somebody, some, somebody that we've never met said that we might need to do it? I mean, what, I don't understand that. And, and, and then, and then all we're, all we're really saying is our target is wrong. But, but we've put a lot of effort into that and we think it's right. So why don't we go to these other people and tell them that it's right and make our case? Forty million's not, is not a small number, in my view. I don't know.
Well, for part of this, it's the operating, uh, expense is higher than the revenues, um, for this fiscal year. It's at ninety-nine point one versus ninety-seven point four million. So that's one of the other reasons we kind of take a look at is to have sufficient, um, revenues to even cover our net operating expenses, um, for this fund. So that's why we have kept, um, the rate increase intact to help cover that. Because at a minimum, we should at least have enough revenues to cover our OpEx. Uh, but I understand what you're saying. And we're, we'll come back and probably show you, uh, probably show you the impact, um, of, of having no increases versus the proposed five percent. And then also the debt covenant, maybe have a little explanation and maybe include that credit rating, um, explanation.
Right, and, and we're going to look at that with the smaller amount of money coming from the West Rack also.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So the.
Move on to.
Okay, so moving on to the sanitation fund. Um, so the sanitation fund is actually coming back to you, um, on May tenth, uh, with a little bit more detail. Uh, that's when the hearing is for the Prop two eighteen. So, um, so I do want to, to show that this forecast right here and this number is again, going to be different than what the Prop two eighteen is because the Prop two eighteen, um, base number was based on a prior fiscal year. And as we got more data and we had the actual, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, operating budget, um, put in and the, um, non-operating, it is going to be different than what the Prop two eighteen is, uh, going to be proposed. So the total, uh, total revenues, um, for sanitation is, um, six, sixty-eight million dollars, which includes four to six and a half million in operating revenues, uh, which is about two and a half million dollars increased. So again, the, the proposed rate increase is already embedded in this, uh, presentation. Uh, it also includes nine million in loan proceeds, five point two million in grants, and also seven point three million in supplemental water charge, uh, supply charge. The total expense is eighty point five million, which includes forty point seven million in operating expense, which is an increase of three point three million, uh, compared to last year. And then the primary drivers of that increase is again shown on the slide. And then the total expense includes, uh, debt service payment to, um, the State Water Resource Board for the two loans that we have, the non potable water connection. Uh, it's going to be about two million dollars a year in debt service payment to State Water Resource Board and also includes a CIP of thirty-seven point nine million, which is then offset by twenty-one point five million in grants and loans, leaving a pay-go of sixteen point four, uh, million dollars. So as shown in this, the total expenses exceeds total revenues by twelve and a half million dollars. So these are one of those funds where we're actually utilizing and driving down, uh, the reserves, um, closer to target. Um, and that's going to, the trend is going to be continuing all the way through twenty twenty-seven. And that's going to, the trend is going to be continuing all the way through 2027. As you can see, it does dip in 2027, so we might have to do another cost of service sooner than later, than what we had initially planned for five years. Because the Prop 218 rate again is based on a prior actual, and now these are based on data if the trend continues in terms of the expenditure. So the proposed rate is going to be presented as, as part of the public hearing for the next upcoming May 10th meeting for this one. So if there's no questions on this particular fund, I'll move on to the stormwater. Okay. The stormwater fund, so the total revenues are shown in the graph is 72.7 million, which includes 24.4 million in operating reserves. And it also includes 48.3 million in loan proceeds from WIFIA. So this is one of those agency loans that we have talked about where even though we got approved, we had needed to spend the money first and we cannot start drawing on, we're barely drawing on the funds this fiscal year. So we have spent majority of, of the, of the money for the North India flood control project and also the stormwater channel in the last two years. Total expense is 93.7 million, which includes 9 million in OpEx. And again, a primary driver is on the slide. The total expense includes debt service payment of 3.3 million for both the North India and the Stormwater Channel. That's the loan from WIFIA and also the upcoming bond issuance, which again, as Jeff has mentioned, we are selling the bond tomorrow, is going to market. And so the first payment of that debt service payment is coming fiscal 2023. It also includes 81 and a half million dollars of CIP and it is offset by the loans of 48.3 million, leaving a PGO of 33.2 million for the CIP. So again, on this one, similar to sanitation, the total expenses exceeds total revenues by 21.1 million, thus decreasing the available reserves. Again, as, as, as you have directed, we are trying to drive down the, the stormwater reserves closer to target and that trend continues all the way to fiscal 2027. But we're going to keep a close look on it and make sure it doesn't go way below the target as we continue.
My memory on, on why the revenues are like this? The way, the way it's, where it's going up and then going down.
It's the, yeah, it's based on the loans proceeds that we get. So if we have the project, when we start drawing on it, we can draw on the money, then it increases. So it's based on loans and grants.
So yeah, the property tax revenue is about 22 million.
And this slide right here just shows the fiscal 2023 budget, which is at 295 million dollars, which is slightly higher than projected for 2022. And we have, it's a net decrease of 26.9 million in cash flow. So our reserves are going down 300 and, to 350. So if we take a look at page one of the table that was handed out to you, which shows 2019 to 2023, you can see that we have been actively trying to get the, the ending reserve closer to a target.
Yeah, that's not on that.
It's on the page two, sorry.
Oh, it's on the second page.
I'm sorry, page two.
Yeah, there it is.
Float over to page two.
Right.
That was not in our packet or was that in our packet? I don't see it on.
I think somebody just emailed it to you, Peter. Sylvia, maybe?
We remembered a little too late, Director Nelson, that you had requested to see that, that good base year comparison pre-COVID of 2019. So we finished preparing that today.
Yeah. I mean, I would say ending reserves have been pretty stable over that four, four year period. Which is good. I can't argue with that. Yeah.
So this is the overall effect. If you have any other questions?
So one of the exhibits, and I don't think we've talked about, is this rate summary sheet? Which has a description of the categories of rates and then it has the.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So I think a comment was made earlier about this, but I, I think this is a little bit confusing because if you look at the difference column, the difference is in the between what the 218 max is and what the proposed rate is, not between the current rate and what the proposed rates are. So I mean, with, you know, if you look at the summary page with only a couple of exceptions, line out of exceptions, all of our rates are going up and some more dramatically than others. So I appreciate the conversation we've had today. I think staff's been really good about being receptive to some of the suggestions that have been made, but I'm already getting questions from folks in the community about why these rates are going up across the board. And I have a, a big committee meeting on Saturday where I know this is going to come up again. So I think some of these increases for particularly families who are perhaps not as entitled as others or don't have the income, it's going to have more of an impact along with everything else that we're dealing with. So to the extent that we can take some of the information that we've been presented with today and discussed and suggestions and come back to us and, and maybe rework some of these recommendations, I think that would be important to try to do.
I'll do.
Thank you.
Here's a trivia question. When we first approved the fiscal 22 budget, what was the, what was the increase or decrease in cash flow that was in that originally approved budget? I bet it was a pretty big decrease. I mean, now we're showing, right? Now we're showing an increase in cash flow of about 10 million for that year that we're just about to finish. But I bet you when we approved it, it was negative.
It was 31, on the budget book, it was $31 million decrease in cash.
So it was a negative 31 and it, that's what we approved. And, and now we think it's going to be positive 10. Is that, what is that? That's a 41 million dollar difference.
40 million swing.
41 million dollar swing. Is that because of loans or what?
So part of that is there was, when we originally projected the Prop 218, we had a higher number, like primarily for last fiscal year in 2021, we had a lower expenses, about 15 million, and that was attributed to water purchase. So that was a decrease of that, that we didn't anticipate. So some, in fiscal 2022, when we went back for the mid-year adjustment, it's a little bit similar to that where we had a significant decrease in what we anticipated in terms of the water, water purchase. But all other costs have been quite close to what we had estimated it to be.
All right. Fair enough. You know, it's something as a board, you know, we're looking at numbers every year. And, and there's a pattern. And the pattern is you guys are producing very conservative numbers that most likely we're, we're going to outperform. The, the problem is we're building rates based on those conservative numbers. And so we end up a lot of times, or sometimes increasing rates when we didn't need to. Or, or we're trying to avoid that really. I mean, maybe we haven't. I mean, we, we got with the 218s that are up here and we ended approving something that's a little smarter because we know more over the passage of time. And, and so we don't have to go to that maximum that was published in the 218. I get the sense that we're going to have a similar with the domestic rate, with the West Rack, possibly one or two others where we don't need to go to the staff recommendation. You know, and, and, and I, I know it's your job to make sure we're, you know, you never want to have that meeting where I asked to borrow a dollar and your pockets are empty, right? I mean, you, you always want to have a little extra left over in case we need it. But $41 million is a big number. And that's the swing between what we approved and where we are now for, just for one year.
When I, you know, when I, I look at our budget book, my favorite page is the all-fund summary. It's also my least favorite page because it gives an oversimplified picture. And I get it, you know, any member of the public looking at, they're going to look at that change in fund balance, whatever. And change from the budget book numbers to actuals a year later too. It's just, but when you start looking at the factors that contribute to that, this year, we're saying we had a fairly hefty chunk of money budgeted for state water project, projects that none of them, we got billed for.
Didn't get the water, yeah.
You know, didn't know we didn't get billed for. There are other issues of CIP not being generated. We always budget for the whole CIP at 100%. We know it's never been 100%. For the last several years, the engineering and operations departments have done fantastically executing at a much higher rate than the past. You had, you had 40s.
I know.
You know, a decade, there was a 20% execution rate one year. It's been in the 90s. They'll pass several years and boards express a bit of regret over that sometimes. But, you know, but even that 10% non-execution, which is usually just timing differences, in the overall scheme of things, it's just, it's going to be a spend.
Yeah, it's still, it's still $10 million.
But it affects, it affects it for June 30th of that year and people go, oh, well, you're a lot richer than you thought you were. And these numbers are dwarfing the numbers of most of the cities in this area too. So.
No, and I will say, I, I, I see what you're saying on the all-funds and this is one of the reasons I didn't like this budgeting goal of maintaining positive cash flow because what we do is we make sure we have a little extra in each one. And together they look like there's too much, right? The fact that the ending reserves has been fairly stable over the last, and I think we really wanted to get there. Definitely the execution on the CapEx has been a big part of that. But also reducing those target reserves, which we did partly because we felt like things were gaining a little out of hand, you know, that we kept getting pressure to raise rates to hit those targets and then it was too much. So, so we reduced the targets. You know, we haven't had as much rate increase as we might have otherwise had. And, and yet we're, we're very stable in terms of our overall cash. So, yeah. I, I think this is the easier one to look at because then you have the, the individual funds that some are great and some are not, you know, and, 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 you know, we can't just take from here and put over there. So.
That's why I say I love this page and I hate this.
That's the hard part. Yeah. No, no, no. Be a lot easier if we could just say, oh, this fund has 50 million too much. Let's put it over there. We can't do that. Wish we could. Okay. So there's a list of things that I'm sure you've been paying attention. I, I wrote them down that we'd like to see as we approach the rate making meetings. Director Estrada, did you have anything else?
I'll just, I'll just echo all of your comments and the rest of the board members. I, I think for starters, it was it was a good thorough presentation. I think it, it allowed us to, you know, have a lot of questions, maybe make comments on how to even prepare more so as we get closer to the, to the decisions about how much we need to increase rates. But I, in particular, really am interested around the idea of, of, you know, getting a, you know, taking a closer look at, for example, the domestic fund where we have a, it seems like a $17 million cushion that we can, we can work with to even perhaps not even have rate increases. I know staff is saying that 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 might not be possible because there's some covenants that we need to meet, but I'd like to get a better understanding of what those are also. It sounds like there's a formula. Maybe we can get more into what that formula looks like. Today we got a pretty you know, good summary on it. But, but, but those are, you know, those are good questions and I certainly would like to know more about that and, and how we maybe position ourselves in the future so that we don't, you know, have to commit to having to have reserves of $99 million. So all, all very good points. I also agree with looking at perhaps not having to make an $8 million payment from west to domestic. You know, we need to, you know, push that out to help out the fund. I think that's a good thing. So you know, in general, good, good, good presentation and a lot of good ideas. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Nelson. Anything further?
Yeah, no, sure. This, this was a, I think, you know, a terrific presentation. Obviously, the directors have, you know, a lot of interest and engagement on this. So you're hearing a lot of that and, you know, I don't think you should in any way take this as, you know, criticism because it's a process and we've always, we've all known it's a process and, and thinking about new ideas and you know, really make, giving direction in, in terms of reserve amounts and, you know, we've set up those targets and so forth. And so now we're in the process of trying to, you know, execute that. I will say, and I don't want to beat the dead horse, but you know, on that rate sheet, I, I really agree with John Aguilar and what he in his description of that is, is, you know, in no way that, I, I don't even think the difference between the proposed rate and the Prop 218 rate should be even in a column. You know, if we have a current rate with the, the May 3rd proposed rate with a 218 rate column, so you have those three columns and then, you know, the rate increase or decrease on the far right. So, so we really know, you know, where we're, you know, how much we're going up. I, I, I think that when, when people talk about transparency in government, I think that that is as much of what they're talking about as as anything. And so when, when we win awards for our budgets and our, and our, which we should because we're, I think, you know, I've never seen a more communicative budget document than, than what CPWD produces. But, but this kind of, I, I think hides the ball and I, I don't think we should be, you know, doing those kinds of things. I, I'm, I'm very supportive of the toggles, looking at the toggles about the, whether we pay the full 8 million as a rerouted Rosedale Rio Bravo payment. We're not making that payment, but we're rerouting those funds over to the payoff of the, of the Mid Valley Pipeline loan. I think it's fantastic that in 2009, we, we implemented the Tom Levy recharge program and, and we had a big loan for that that we borrowed on an inter-agency loan. And we're actually going to pay that off. I think that that's, you know, a testament to fiscal responsibility. I think that should be a goal on the Mid Valley Pipeline as well. I just, I, I, I agree. We should have some toggles there as well. So all, all in all, I think things are going well. You've got a lot of work to do and appreciate all of your efforts. They're, they're good and, and thanks for putting together a great report.
Thanks.
So I'm actually, I just want to say, you know, I'm pretty happy to be honest. I mean, I didn't get to see this and usually I see him before I'm so prepared, but I didn't get to see the presentation. It's always new to me. And, you know, I'm happy because there really isn't one in here that we need to do an increase. And I think that's a, that's a. And, you know, I'm happy because there really isn't one in here that we need to do an increase. And I think that's a testament to you guys. You guys are doing a really good job. You guys are doing a really good job. When, I mean, really, none of these need to be increased this year. We can do, maybe we still will because of these reserve targets and all of what you're talking about, these ratings and things, I get it. But, you know, in every district, I think, utilities are probably going up. We may not have to, I think that's a testament to you guys. So, thank you.
How's that for flipping the script?
I'm not sure if I liked it, that compliment.
Well, I, you know, I think that, yeah, it's going to, the staff recommendation is going to be the high point and we're going to end up somewhere below that, for sure. Yeah. John, Director Aguilar, anything further?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. No, I think that the information was very good also. I appreciate it. And I look forward to our, to the next six weeks or whatever it is. Yeah, it'll be fun, all right. With no further business, we are adjourned.